Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Wake County Virtual Candidate Forum for the Board of Commissioners. The League is proud to support voter education and to continue our long history of hosting candidate forums. Wake County is governed by a seven-member Board of Commissioners. The Board enacts policies such as establishment of the property tax rate, regulation of land use and zoning outside municipal jurisdictions, and the adoption of an annual budget. Each Commissioner files to run for election within the district where they live, and Commissioners are elected countywide and represent and serve all county residents. That means that every voter votes for candidates in all seven districts. The current fiscal year 2020 budget for Wake County is $1.47 billion. This covers the Wake County Public Schools, Wake Tech Community College, libraries, Health and Human Services, the Wake County contribution to food and nutrition programs, law enforcement parks, EMS services, elections, and many more programs we see every day. Today, we welcome candidates for District Seven, Democrat Vicki Adamson and Republican Farouk Ochetan. District Seven is on the western side of Wake County encompassing Morrisville, West Raleigh, and the airport. Both candidates live in District Seven. Welcome Vicki and Farouk. Thank you for joining us today. We will ask every candidate for the Board of Commissioners the same questions. The questions will cover a range of issues relevant to the scope of the Board. I'd like to verify with both of you that you have not received these questions in advance.
I have not.
You may now have two minutes for an introductory statement. Vicki, please go ahead.
Sure. Good morning. I'm Commissioner Vicki Adamson, and I currently serve as Vice Chair of the Wake County Commission. And I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for, in this unprecedented time, being very creative in how we can have these candidate forums. A little bit about myself, I'm a native North Carolinian. I grew up in the Piedmont area. I attended college at East Carolina University, and I have an accounting degree. I spent 15 years in corporate finance. So when we go to our very large budget, I was not intimidated at all. I've dealt with very large corporate budgets before. I relocated to Raleigh in 1983, so I consider myself a native Raleighite for as long as I've been here. Because when I came here, the Belt Line was not even completed around Raleigh. And I'm currently at the end of my first two-year term. I'm seeking a second two-year term. And what I have done that I'm most proud of in the last three years is we worked very closely with the school board, and we have created a five-year plan to improve public education. Because prior to coming into office, I spent the previous decade in public school advocacy. And in our five-year plan, we will increase guidance counselors, nurses, and health professionals, teaching assistants, and we will get all school personnel up to a livable wage of $15. Last year, we were able to give our school bus drivers raises to $15 an hour. We have created a series of programs that we call the Middle Class Express. That seemed to be one of the things we were missing in Wake County, is we attract a lot of high-tech jobs, but we didn't have the jobs in the middle. So we are focusing on high-tech manufacturing jobs. And we have worked with Wake Tech, and we're actually creating a new campus in Windale that will focus on industrial technology. And we've created an apprenticeship program with Wake Tech that I'm really proud of, where anyone, regardless of your age, who would like retrained, can go to Wake Tech and basically work three days a week in an apprenticeship program and make an average of about $50,000 a year and go to school.
Thank you.
Yes.
You hit your two minutes. All right. Farouk, if you would like to start now?
Right. Good morning. It is a true honor. It's an honor to run, and it's also an honor to be with you. And I have tremendous respect for Ms. Adamson, the Vice Chair. And so I look forward to seeing a spirited discussion on how we can make Wake County better. I'm an immigrant. My family relocated to the United States. My sister developed cancer. And so they dropped everything that they had, work, clothing, everything on a dime, literally, and moved our family to the United States when I was eight years old, the same age as my daughter. And they could have gone anywhere in the world, but they chose the United States to pursue an opportunity, both to get my sister hopefully better, but then beyond that, to start a new life for our family. And I want to do everything I can. I think the main principle or the reason that I'm running is that I want to do everything I can to protect and preserve the quality of life and all of the things we cherish and hold dear, certainly in this country, but certainly in our county, in our community. There is a tremendous amount of diversity here, and I want to represent all of the people in Wake County because I believe my background, my experiences, I think, would speak to a lot of the people in Wake County. I think we can rein in a new era, a more efficient government, one that is accountable to the people. I am not in favor of having to borrow to ensure that we are making ends meet. Wake County currently is dealing with a $2-plus-billion debt burden, and that is expensive. That's something that the Wake County citizens are having to take on the burden of. And I think we can do better. We can bring in a new era of prosperity into the county through looking for efficiencies, through ensuring that we are making ends meet, and that borrowing and increasing our debt isn't necessarily the best way to go about doing things. This is what I learned in business and years of being an entrepreneur. My family located to Raleigh in 1988. I attended Broughton High School, went on to UNC Greensboro, where I've gotten a business degree and immersed myself in various business endeavors. I've learned that in order to be successful, you've got to work hard, but you also have to find those efficiencies where needed. And I think we can do that with Wake County government. I think we have to also learn to live within our means because continuing to borrow and continue to increase taxes does a number of things that are perhaps unintended, but it makes our community too expensive. And Ms. Adamson talked about the middle-class workers. Well, if they can't afford to live in Wake County, they're going to find residences elsewhere, and we want to keep them here in Wake County. I'm a huge fan of innovation and technology. I currently serve as a co-chair to the North Carolina Task Force, organized under the Lieutenant Governor's Office, focusing on innovation and technology. I want to bring that creative thinking to the table. I'm a father to my precious eight-year-old and engaged to be married to a wonderful woman named Kristy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving to the question part of the forum. And you will have two minutes to answer each question. Here's the first question. "We are living under new pressures and trying to adjust to a new normal. Existing inequalities are more apparent than ever. The public school system recognizes this disparity and has provided students with laptops and hotspots. What strategy are you prepared to offer to help low-income families with children as they navigate and adjust to the pandemic environment?" Farouk, you may go first.
Yeah, these times are truly unprecedented. Having an eight-year-old, I certainly can empathize with families that are struggling with what it means to cope with the pressures because we're dealing with things beyond just scholastic issues. We're dealing with children who are unable to see their friends or loved ones. That creates a tremendous emotional burden. I've been supportive of the county's decision to pursue some federal funds to ensure that the Wake County school system has the resources they need to provide the needed technology to students. I think that that's an essential first step. But I do believe in partnerships within various businesses and entrepreneurial leadership in Orkin County. We have amazing businesses that are here, and I think that they're willing to step up to the challenge. I think mentorship programs are exceptional, and I don't think children, even in elementary school grades, are too young, or they're not too young, to participate in various entrepreneurial programs. We have to remind children or families that not only will we get beyond this current situation, we certainly will, but that we can continue to evolve and learn. And I do believe in supporting these mentorship programs and entrepreneurial motivated initiatives to get private businesses and leadership within those businesses and entrepreneurs in connection with our school system and our parents and our students to see if there are some innovative ways in which they can continue to evolve from this. They have to see that there's a big world out there, and we can't forget that these children need to constantly be exposed to new ways of thinking. So that would be one of the things that I would support in creating some creative solutions so the children have access to more resources than just what is on their computer.
Thank you very much. Vicki?
Yes, thank you for that question. We just provided through our CARES Act $15 million of funding to the Wake County Public Schools, and we had previously committed $12 million. And we just worked with the school system to purchase 85,000 Chromebooks and hotspots to go with that because the first thing we need to do is make sure our low-income children all have devices and hotspots so they can connect in, they can do the online learning. And the second thing with this challenge of online learning is our students with IEPs. Some of those require specialized help, speech therapy, occupational therapy, to really, to get to their full potential, and just some extra help personnel to reach out and work with them one-on-one. So we have, part of that $15 million will go to that, just to hire some extra hands to help. And the second thing we're doing is we're working with our childcare subsidies that we already provide to make sure that any parent who needs high-quality childcare can get it, especially parents who are used to their child being at school, and making sure that's quality childcare that will help the student with their online learning. So that's what we're currently doing. And yes, that's one of the things that keeps me up at night, is making sure our students have the resources they need to learn this year.
Thank you very much, Vicki. Okay, I'm going to move on to question two. "We expect many people to be facing a housing crisis in the next few months due to evictions or foreclosures resulting from high unemployment and the economic crisis we're all facing. How do you propose to address what will become the dire need for emergency and longer-term affordable housing in our community?" Vicki? Okay, Vicki, please.
Okay, you want me to go first?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. I was a little confused there. Actually, that is one of the things, is affordable housing, that I have spent a lot of time working with the last two years. Most of you are aware, we have dedicated a penny of our sales tax, which is about $15 million a year, to affordable housing. And in the last two years, we have partnered with state, federal agencies, and local builders who, and we are currently building more units per year than any time in the history of Wake County. Our goal was 500 last year. We were over 700, and we're already at 600 this year. But unfortunately, you can't build your way out of it. That's where our Middle Class Express programs come in, to help people get better jobs where they can afford more housing in Wake County. And as far as the current crisis with the COVID-related unemployment, currently, we put $5 million into housing, to housing subsidy help, and we've put another $15 million in. And that program actually should be unveiled the first part of next week, which will help 3,000 families stay in their homes until the economy can get moving again and they can get back to work. So yeah, affordable housing is near and dear to my heart. And actually, last year, in order to make this work, we have to partner with the local home builders and do some private-public partnerships. And with my work for Affordable Housing, the Home Builders Association of Wake County gave me their Elected Official of the Year Award for some of these partnerships. So last year, we took our $15 million and turned it into over $100 million worth of policy.
Thank you very much, Vicki.
Yes.
All right, Farouk, your turn.
Thank you so much. And there's actually several things I completely support and agree with Ms. Adamson on, and I do commend her for her work on the private-public partnerships. I am, as I stated in the previous question, a big supporter of that. And I do believe if given the opportunity, I can continue certainly with the good work that Ms. Adamson has done on that end. One of the problems we do have in Wake County, though, as I mentioned in my opening statement, the cost of living is increasing. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that while we support good jobs, you know, getting people opportunity to get better jobs, better-paying jobs through education and through the increase of opportunities, we can't forget the fact that rents in Wake County are higher than the national average. They've gone up some 52% in the last decade. And so when we're talking about affordable housing, let's consider all the full spectrum of individuals and families who are trying to make Wake County their home. And so while rents are going up, what we also know is that the builders as a whole, when they're building new construction, when property values are increasing, you're going to find that they're going to build more and more expensive homes. That is fine. That is certainly, I'm a supporter of free-market capitalism, and that's what they are doing. They're increasing their profit margins. However, through those private-public partnerships, we have to have some support of the builders. We have to make sure that they have the ability to continue doing their craft, but we also have to have some opportunity to work with them to ensure that starter home sizes, you know, in $100, $125,000 range are also being constructed, that there is enough land allocated for that type of construction so that families that are buying their first home, not their third home, can qualify for good mortgage, and the rates are good, obviously, and that they can, again, make Wake County their home for a long period of time. So that private-public partnership is essential, and I do think working with the builders is crucial to ensure that the starter home size of homes are being built and that there is enough of them to support the aid.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the next question. "Recent events have highlighted community pressures on the resources devoted to public safety and law enforcement. This can show up in how the criminal justice system operates, how law enforcement officers operate in public schools, and in other interactions in our communities. Do you feel that improvements need to be made or that funding needs to be reevaluated?" Farouk?
Can I ask a clarification question? When you say funding needs to be reevaluated, do you mean funding for law enforcement?
Or public safety, all of the above, kind of the umbrella of however you define it.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent question. It's something I'm very passionate about. When I mentioned in my opening statement, the importance of protecting and preserving our quality life here. You know, we're on the top 10 list of every top 10 list there is in Wake County. That's something we, I think, are all proud of, and it is that way because relatively speaking, the cost of living had remained low, and crime and public safety, crime was low and public safety was high. We have to preserve that. And I know that these discussions need to be had. I am in favor of pursuit of any injustice done onto any person, an innocent person. I want to make sure that people, including law enforcement, is held accountable for unjust acts. However, we cannot create an environment where unjust acts are being committed onto private citizens and private businesses in pursuit of justice. I think those don't mesh well together. I think it's important to make sure that our law enforcement is funded, that they have the funds necessary for proper training. And I think it's entirely possible, one of the things I learned in dealing with many friends in law enforcement is when funding is cut, training is one of the first things that goes alongside of uniformed officers and public safety officials. And one example I like to use is human trafficking. It's a very big problem in our state certainly and as a nation. And one of the first things we do, if God forbid it happened to any one of our families or children, or anyone for that matter, but it does happen to the tune of thousands a year, hundreds of thousands nationally speaking, where children go missing every year, we can pick up the phone and we call that law enforcement agency. We want to make sure that they're going to be there on the other end to pick up that phone call when there is an emergency. So I support funding the police. I support in pursuit of effective educational and training initiatives. I support a public-private partnership in making sure that there's a degree of accountability, and I want to pursue at all costs any injustice done onto our innocent citizens on behalf of anyone. And I want to hold those individuals accountable for doing any criminal act onto private citizens.
Thank you. All right, Vicki?
Thank you for the question. Every year when we do the budget, we do evaluate spending for each department. As most anybody out there who's watched our budget process knows that we spend weeks and weeks and work sessions and work sessions looking at each spending area. And when I first got on the commission, public safety is one of our statutory requirements and something that's very important that we do. I went and toured our detention center. I wanted to see what the conditions looked like to me personally in our detention center. And one of the things I found is we didn't even have an AA meeting there. So we now have an AA meeting at our detention center for anyone who would like to attend. And I spoke with our major who's in charge of training to just find out where our law enforcement needs to be trained better. And one of the things I found is we didn't have a simulation house. So it's difficult for our emergency services and our law enforcement to train together. So we now have a simulation house in our long-term budget and are working with a consultant to see exactly what we need with training. And with the recent pressures of the Black Lives Matter movement, and I absolutely believe that all black lives matter, I've also been working with our major in charge of training to see what other help professionals we can embed with law enforcement. And that's just reprioritizing funding, and I have already started those conversations. As far as our EMS, which is one of our frontline, public safety, our biggest challenge with EMS is just staffing. So we have worked with Wake Tech to create an apprenticeship program for EMS staff so we can create that new pipeline. But yeah, public safety is really important to me because everybody expects when you pick the phone up and call to have an ambulance service, police service, and fire service there when you need it.
Thank you very much, Vicki.
Yes.
All right, and now I'm going to move to the fourth question.
Sure.
"Wake County has invested a lot of time and money in improving our public transportation system."
Yes.
"What do you think that system's going to look like in the next few years? How can we best benefit from the investment and capital commitments that have already been made?" Vicki?
Yes, I love public transportation. I'll start with the investments we've already made. We have doubled our bus service. And what we did is we did an extensive two-year study where we talked to all stakeholders. And what we found is, and we were looking at our investment with the bus services in Wake County, did you need more frequency or do you need more routes, more coverage? And what we found our citizens wanted was two-thirds more coverage and a third more routes. So we now have express service from all of our municipalities into stations in Raleigh, into our transfer stations, and we have increased service on our busiest routes. So instead of maybe waiting 30 minutes for a bus, you only wait 15 minutes. And we created what we call the Raleigh Go-Pass because if our public transportation is going to be successful in Wake County, people have to ride it. And people my age who are just used to getting in your car and driving, it's very hard to see the benefits of public education. So we created the Youth Go-Pass so anybody under 18 years of age can apply for and get a pass and ride all our buses, including our Go Triangle buses, for free. And we are averaging about 200,000 trips a year that our young people are taking on our buses for free. And then we extended that program to people 65 years of age and over. They can also ride our transportation for free. What do I see? I keep saying I cannot wait till I get on light rail and buy my ticket and ride from Raleigh to Research Triangle Park. That's my goal. Our current expansion is for our BART lines, which is Bus Rapid Transit, which in our first BART line is going to be the Newborn Corridor.
All right. Thank you. All right, now it's Farouk's turn.
Thank you. So this is certainly an interesting conversation because I know that my outlook differs from Ms. Adamson. And one of the things, as a private citizen, that I always notice is how empty these buses are. I mean, virtually everywhere we go, there's maybe one or two individuals in these huge gigantic buses, which are a tremendous cost, obviously, to the county, but it also has environmental concerns for me. So in looking into the future, I envision a more streamlined approach to the traditional busing or the bus, not busing, but buses as a whole. I do think we can look for more streamlined vehicles. I think that there are ways to reduce the overall cost of what the traditional transportation systems are. And I commit now, if given the opportunity, I want to study extensively into the cost-benefit outlook of the numbers of buses, the size of buses, and whether or not there's a proportional amount of funds being allocated to them in consideration of the numbers of people that are using them. I do think that anybody and everybody in our county that needs public transportation should have access to it. I simply differ in the sense that I think the traditional look of the buses and how burdensome and costly they are, I think we can do better. I do also think that private-public partnerships could work here because I know of a number of personal examples of single mothers that live in the outskirts of the county who work in, let's say, the city and one of the municipalities, and they find it very difficult to get access to the transportation. And so I do think that private-public partnerships could work to help those individuals, to bring them into job opportunities that might be more located within municipalities. I don't want to forget those citizens that are in the outskirts of the county. So private partnerships and private-public partnerships, more streamlined vehicles, and I'm committed to studying this cost-benefit analysis. I am not a fan of any sort of light rail. I think that there's lots of examples in the nation where the cost of it is substantial in comparison to the benefit. I've been to cities that use light rail, and again, they're empty, they're unused in many examples. I'm not sure that that's a good fit for Wake County, so I would not be supportive of that.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to move to the last question. "Wake County provides vital health services to the community as we see currently with the pandemic, testing and tracing. Another example is a Wake County infant mortality work group, which reported this year on the very high death rate of African-American mothers and babies. How will you protect the budget devoted to such vital health services as you're forced to confront financial pressures from decreased tax revenues? What programs and resources should the county commission direct to help vulnerable populations?" Farouk?
Excuse me. Sure, thank you so much. Of course, this is the height of the concerns that we have for our community and the fact that there may be a disproportionate impact on people of color and African-American communities. That is tragic, and that's something we need to look further into. There needs to be federal funding available, obviously. We have to get support from our federal government as we have already seen, and as Ms. Adamson commented on, getting some federal funds to be able to support what our local initiatives are attempting to do. When it comes to health, this is a chicken-and-egg problem. One of the things that has to happen is our economy... the things that has to happen is our economy has to start opening up again. I, I can't, you know, I've spoken with several members of the Raleigh Tourism Board, and, you know, there is a way to bounce out of this as our economy is allowed to open back up. I am a supporter of a calculated and prepared reopening strategy, supporting the businesses that are already here, that are struggling, that are looking for ways to stay open. As their businesses are able to open, then the revenues will increase, thereby giving us, as, as county board, to be able to allocate the necessary resources to health services as a whole. I'm not familiar with the initiative that you mentioned with the infant mortality, I'll have to look into that in more detail. I apologize, I'm unprepared in that regard, but don't assume for a moment I won't look into it and investigate it fully, so I don't have enough specific details on that, maybe Ms. Adamson can comment on it, but I won't stand for any sort of impact on, certainly disproportionate impact on any member of our community, particularly our children. I wanna make certain that funds are allocated to ensure that they have all of the needed health services going forward. I just look at the reopening and the support of businesses and an economic reawakening of our community to be the catalyst to get us as a county commission to be able to support these types of services, not necessarily borrowing. And I do, I'm a big believer in reallocation, Ms. Adamson made a point of that. I, I think the budget has a number of areas where funds could be better prioritized, and thereby I would look at reprioritizing some of those available funds towards these types of initiatives, once we have a chance to go in and really investigate these, the budget, and how we might be able to better allocate the resources.
Thank you very much. Vicki?
Yes, um, thank you for bringing up our Infant Mortality Work Group. I had the honor of serving on that work group, and I also serve as vice chair of the Health and Human Services Committee. And we spend a third of our budget on Health and Human Services, it's our largest county government. And as my colleague, Dr. West, always says, you can tell your priorities by where your money goes, and we put our money in Health and Human Services. And you're right, we are in a crisis level now with the COVID, I think it's just exposed a lot of our inequities. I think the first thing we need, and something that I have been a strong advocate for the last two years, it's one of our legislative initiatives is expanding Medicaid. If we had expanded Medicaid, a lot of our county dollars, as Farouk said, we need more federal dollars, and the first way to get more federal dollars into Wake County is to expand Medicaid. We have over a hundred thousand citizens without health insurance, and we estimate about seventy-five thousand of those would be covered with the expansion of Medicaid, which would bring a lot of federal dollars into Wake County and free up our dollars for other programs. We, we did get a nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from the state of North Carolina to do our infant mortality rate and our infant mortality rate, and what happens is in Wake County, a black baby is three times more likely to die before the first three months of life than a white baby. And that's not just environmental, that structural racism, that's a lot of factors that play into that, and we are tackling that head on. What I am a big proponent of and, and work toward is decentralizing our Health and Human Services. We, of course, we have the huge facilities behind Wake Med, but we have regional centers, and I am working to, to support and add to our regional centers. Because what we're seeing with the gentrification of southeast Raleigh is a lot of low-income, oh, you look like, am I finished? I'm sorry, you moved forward, I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was gonna say, could you just finish your sentence?
Sure, sure, is moving out to the Knightdale-Windell area, so we are strengthening our Health and Human Services presence in those communities so we can reach people where they live.
Thank you very much, sorry about that. All right, so this concludes the question part of our, of our forum. Thank you to the candidates for coming today to participate in our virtual candidate forum. We recognize that running and serving in elected office is a considerable commitment of time, energy, and often sacrificed opportunities. The League, along with the residents of Wake County, is grateful that we have so many capable fellow citizens who are willing to step forward to serve the important duties as member of the Wake County Board of Commissioners. You have two minutes each to make your closing statements. Vicki, please go ahead.
Sure. Like I said, my name is Vicki Adamson. I'm currently a Wake County Commissioner and serve as vice chair. I feel like the last two years, we have done a lot of great work to move this county forward in everything from public safety to transportation, to Health and Human Services, to education. And I am committed, I work very hard, this is my full-time job, I get up in the morning, I do commission work all day, and I would like to continue to serve in this capacity in keeping Wake County a great place to live, learn, and play. And I ask for your support during this election cycle in your vote, and thank you for watching our video today.
Thank you. Farouk?
Thank you. It has been an honor to be here among all of you and alongside of the vice chair, Ms. Adamson. I don't doubt for a moment that we were equally passionate about a better future for Wake County. I do believe that we might have differing views on how to achieve greatness for our community and our citizens. As an immigrant, my, my personal experience is that I believe that the opportunities here in Wake County and certainly our nation are greater than anywhere else in the world. And I wanna do everything within my power, and hence the reason why I'm running for this post, so that I can use what talents God bestowed onto me and what things I've learned in business to help my community rein in a new and even more prosperous era. One of the things that concerns me is that I, I see a lot of once-wonderful communities across this nation where their citizens are fleeing, and they're fleeing because crime rates have increased, they're fleeing because the cost of living has become unbearable. And I don't want that to happen to Wake County, I do want my daughter, when she's of age and has a family of her own, to raise her family here. And I believe there are things we can do together. I do believe that we can rein in that era of prosperity for Wake County beyond COVID. I do believe in being better prepared. I do think as a county commissioner, I have a number of things I'm planning on installing, including a pandemic preparedness initiative that allows the citizens to be a part of the solution, so they're aware of the metrics. I do believe that economically speaking, that we can bounce back from this, but we do need to support our businesses. And I do believe that the future is brighter than, than our past because there are things that we need to improve on, but I do think that our board needs some ideological diversity. So I encourage you to please look at my website, farukforwake.com, that's F-A-R-U-K-F-O-R-W-A-K-E. I do have a digital yard sign, I don't believe in yard signs, so if you feel like supporting me, please download my digital yard sign and send it to friends and family, and I appreciate this opportunity, it's an honor to run and to have an opportunity to represent the people of Wake County, and I wish you all very well. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. We close our forum now. Be sure to go to vote411.org to learn more about the candidates on your ballot and to learn the latest information on polling places and location. Thank you again for joining us.